Welcome, regular session. Nogales Housing Authority Board of Commissioners meeting, 5:00 PM, Wednesday, March 5th, 2025, City Hall Complex, City Council Chambers. I call this meeting to order. We please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mendez, does the honor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I got one call to the public.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
All right, I just wanted to quickly present something because I bet was inspired over the times that you bring the professional women's into the group with your speaking down below and anything to that effect. I said we need to get caught up into what's going on. So from this point forward, you are known as Council Woman.
Wow!
And this brother, no more council members since we had council men.
Thank you.
We need council women.
Thank you.
So now you can put that in. So I was gonna do that for the big one, but then realized.
Yeah, if I could just say something, maybe?
Go ahead.
You can say it again at the beginning of the other meeting. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, that's very nice. But aside from being nice, that's very professional and it's about time that those name tags are changed to Council Woman. And, 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 well, it's nothing to be kidding around. I really do, I really do thank you for that. Because I think it shows respect not just to us, but to the women. And it's also Women's Month. So, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
International women's.
International women's. And there are many women that broke those glass ceilings. And, and it's about time, thank you.
Certainly, Walker, if you want me to do it again for the, oh, I can do that again. Certainly, I wanted to do it, so if it's right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job. Maritza, Director's Report, Financial Report, please.
Good afternoon, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, wonderful recognition there. On our occupancy report for public housing for the month of February, existing leases 217, ready to lease units, we have two, in turnaround status, one, I'm sorry, ready to lease one in turnaround status, six, for a total of 226, we have six on the offline. Move-ins, we didn't have any this month, move-outs, we didn't have any, no transfers, and we interviewed one out of two, which means that we actually sent out appointments for two and only one showed up. We have 217 units leased out of the 220 available, we're still staying up on our 98%. Waiting list, one bedroom, 96 applicants, two bedroom, 57 applicants, three bedrooms, 19, four bedrooms, three, and five bedrooms, one. Any questions on public housing occupancy?
Okay, continue, Ms. Cervantes.
Maintenance, month of February, we had 72 total work orders, out of which 65 were completed. The difference there was that our inspector, moving along with the public housing inspections that were due this month, had 10 on the last week of the month, therefore, any work that needed to be done ruled over to this month, and that's why we have those outstanding compared to how we had been working before. One unit in turnaround status, zero made ready, and we had only four callbacks this month, which was good. Housing Choice voucher, on the top right, out of 177 vouchers, we have 155 leased. We don't have any on the street yet, we have 22 available. We had zero move-ins, zero move-outs, and we started to work on that one list, since we opened the list, we started to work on interviewing all the new applicants. Out of 19, we interviewed 13, which was a very good turnaround compared to other months. We have the one poured out, and we have 140 on our waiting list. Project-based voucher, we actually had one move-out. So we had one available, however, throughout, within the same month, we interviewed and are ready to move in this month. So we're calling it on the street because it's not really available, however, they're not quite moved in yet, at the end of February. So move-ins, we have zero, move-outs, we have one, transfers, zero, and we interviewed that one that's ready to move in this month. Waiting list, we have 25. Stability vouchers, out of five, we have the four executed and the one that's still poured out. Emergency housing vouchers, 15, and the 10 executed under lease with one poured out. Any questions on Section 8, yes?
So what's poured out? What does that mean?
That means that they move to another city, and instead of them absorbing it, they live there, but we pay for it, under our vouchers. If they have availability, if they have vouchers available, they absorb them, which means that our voucher comes back to us and they take that responsibility. However, if they don't, our Section 8 participants have the right to move wherever because it's Housing Choice voucher, and we carry on with the actual responsibility. You're welcome.
Is that for a amount of time, or is it until they pull up?
As long as they continue to qualify. We are working on one.
Thank you.
In the back, we have our budget. Administrative expenses, allocated 368,170, expenditures, 277,757 and 75 cents, with a balance of 90,412 and 25 cents. Tenant services, 8,610, expenditures, 49544, and the balance is still 8,11456. Utility expenses, allocated 304,290, expended 265,898 and 79 cents, with a balance of 38,391 and 21 cents. Ordinary maintenance and operations, allocated 830,700, expenditures, 472,772 and 46 cents, with a balance of 357,927 and 54 cents. Insurance expenses, allocated 153,900, expenditures, 56,76787, with a balance of 87,132 and 13 cents. Balance is of 2282025, out of the allocated 1,655,670 dollars, we have expended 1,073,692 and 31 cents, with a balance of 581,977 and 69 cents. Any questions on that part of the budget?
Have you, have you heard any changes within your administration as far as funding and anything that you have or from HUD that might be, be disturbed?
I do not have any concrete information to share with you at this time. Our field office did take a hit, and that was coming up on the other portion of my report that I'll explain later, but no, I do not want to give any information that we have not received in writing from our field office or HUD headquarters for that matter.
Vice Mayor?
Going back to the administrative expenses, on the utility, is that going to be enough for the, to cover the month of March? Thirty-eight thousand? Thirty-eight thousand, 391, that includes water, electricity, sewer and all that, right?
If, if we don't have enough within the allocated line, we have enough room, wiggle room to move from another line, I could send you the broken down expenditure. So here, you're looking at 4,300 as a whole, but we have the broken down different line items, and it'll be covered, we won't be in the red, but I can send that to you if you want to see that, the particular breakdown for 4,300.
And my other question was ordinary maintenance and operations. You allocated 130,700, and you've spent about half of it, and you still have about another half, and you've got the whole month, but I'll bring that up when the budget comes around, okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Ms.?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Under the grants, on 2022, we have obligated from last month to this month, the change would be 727,543, leaving us a balance of 2,629 dollars for the 2022 grant, that's the capital grant. For 2023 capital grant, we've obligated 680,89139, leaving us a balance of 66,91061. On the 2023 grant, the 91% has been allocated, I'm sorry, obligated, and we continue to work on that one as well. Any questions on the grants?
The main focus is the distribution date, right? Thank you.
The obligation date, and then after that, the distribution date.
From the initial?
Yeah.
From the initial?
Uh huh.
So from the initial, we worry about obligating the funds by a certain date and then expending the funds two years after that. I could add those dates, well, they're actually here. On 2022, you have the obligation, 5/12/2022, obligation end date, 5/11, and the dispersment end date is 5/11/2026. So we have until May of this year to spend the 2,629 that's left.
So?
I'm sorry, till next year.
So, Maritza, on, on, on 2023?
Yes.
We had 747,802, and we only, and we had till the 16th of this, of last month. And we did not obligate at all?
We don't have to obligate at all, so on, by the obligation end date, we just need to obligate 90%.
We could still spend it.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
We don't lose it?
No.
Okay, I just.
Any other question?
No.
Good questions. Um, in continuation of my report, we did have our field office conducting a comprehensive review of our PHA the week of the 17th through the 21st. And I had mentioned this before, not really knowing what it entailed, and the comprehensive review was exactly that. They came, they visited, and they checked from A to Z. They did explain to us that usually they try to program these comprehensive reviews at least every five years, and they don't recall when they last visited Nogales Housing Authority. Um, with that being said, it was a wonderful experience. It was bittersweet because it was during that week that we found out that our field office and the team that was actually here in person was no longer going to be a team when they got back to Phoenix, because of the changes. So we were impacted at that level, and now a field office of, I believe he said 12, is down to three. They're still promising to provide the same services. On the same token, like I said, there are partnerships gained and partnerships lost. We had not met in person with half of the team, and in particular instances, it was a high-bye kind of thing because some of the ladies that we did meet that week are no longer with us, even though we had been working with them, well, I had been working with them for the past year. But it was a great experience, and it was more of a learn, learn situation where they got to learn about Nogales Housing Authority, things that they did not know, especially the team that's there now. As you recall before, the team that most of you dealt with before is gone, so part of the new team is gone as well, but now we have a newer team, including the new executive director. But it was a wonderful experience, and we will continue to grow this partnership and be able to share, just like they're sharing with us, and they're learning from us because they actually found out that there's a lot of gaps in what they were supposed to be providing for us in terms of tools and training, opposed to what we thought we should have been doing and weren't doing correctly. So I'm looking forward to the final report, which will be released to us in April, along with the recommendations on how to fix the findings that we have and tools and resources to get the experience and the training that we need and make sure that our staff who has been there for the longest time thinking we were doing things the right way, and there's just, you know, minor changes here and there, but like I said, it was a wonderful learning experience, especially building that partnership and being able to network out of our own little office. Any questions on the visit?
You know, thank you, Maritza, for allowing me to be one of the, the people they interviewed. I think we collaborated together and talked about very good, you know, how, how to promote, you know, Nogales and, and the services that you guys do for, for our community. Like you said, they were very surprised as to what we have and how beautiful our units looked and all that. Thank you for the great paintings that you have, have, have done and all of your hard work. You know, I had the first experience of meeting the people from HUD back in '23, I think it was, or '22, and, you know, they don't realize, you know, it's like, where is Nogales? And, uh, and they didn't realize that we don't get the information that the East Coast gets and, and everybody else. And, you know, so it was a very nice meeting with them, and they were, they were, you know, very surprised how, how functioning you, you guys have it and everything, so thank you for everything and thank you for, you know, being able to bring us up to date on this.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I was the other person that was interviewed by HUD, and, and they had a couple of questions regarding the, the governance of the Housing Authority, and I, I told them that, you know, since I've been on the council and since the city turned the, the Housing Authority into one of the departments of the city, we're running strictly by the city charter. But then they said we still need to abide by the, the Housing Authority bylaws, and for some reason or other, you know, the administration at the City Hall, it's, it's binding us to the, just to the city charter rules, and we're not, we're not following the, the bylaws of the Housing Authority. For example, the, the body here as, as a commissioners, we, we are allowed by HUD rules to go, to go to the Housing Authority and talk to employees and ask them, you know, and what's, what's going on in the Housing Authority, are we having any problems? But if you go by the city charter, they, they don't, they, they, we can't do that. So they were also kind of confused, but Mr. Rhodes said that he would write a letter after the, after the review, and he's going to outline some of those rules and regulations. So maybe we might be making, doing some changes because the city council meeting and the Housing Authority meeting are two separate bodies. So he's going to try to, try to write something in, in, in that essence that separates both entities. And other than that, I think, I think that, that, that they gave us a good review, you know, they talked good about the Housing Authority, and hopefully, you know, we, we can get all those, all those errors resolved. And the other thing that you mentioned is about the commissioners taking the test, the, being certified for, for the, lead the way, I think it is.
Yes, it is.
So I already did mine, I think Commissioner Parat, I don't know if anybody else has done them, because that's one of the findings. Other than that, you know, I'm, I'm okay.
Thank you.
Remind them, because I, I had told them that I had done mine already, and they, they were going to let me know if they found, found it, because I, I had already done it in the past, and they asked them if, do I need to redo it, and they said no, but see if they could answer that question.
They wouldn't have it on record, we would have it here at the field office, and they, then we, I'm sorry, here at our Housing Authority, and then I would actually concur that, yes, everybody has taken it, or no, I'm missing so many. And since I've been here, I have two actual confirmations of completion, so unless you have it and you send me, just send me an email saying that you did complete it, then I have that.
Okay.
As a backup to verify that you completed the training.
My old email.
Okay, thank you.
So, so if you don't get an email, you, you can go ahead and log into the, to the, to that program, and it'll show you right there, there's a little square that says, you know, 100% completed, because they have your name and your ID number and all that, password, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all I have for my actual Director's Report. We don't have any other questions on the report, we can move on.
Okay. Any more questions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up on, on Mayor Maldonado's question, which is a really good question about any of the federal, federal money spend or will be impacted. So I guess you answered that you don't know yet, right?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
I thought you were just focusing on the, on the workers, you know, they're cutting down on the, on the workforce for all the federal departments, so that's why you said from, they went from 12 to 3, right?
Yes, because they're all directly hired by federal.
Well, thank you. We'll be in Washington so next week, so if you have any questions that you want us to address, let me know, please.
Thank you very much.
And I'll address them over there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your report, Maritza. We go to item five, Housing Resolution. One, in consideration, possible action of Housing Resolution, motion of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authorities of the City of Nogales approving and adopting the Nogales Housing Authorities operating, operating budget for April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2026. Any discussion? Maritza, you had some changes in this, right?
Yes, sir. Our actual operating budget from last week to yesterday was revised, and I did send out the revision. Those of you that do not have it, I do have copies if you'd like to see it now. I also want to add to that, then, then, that when we present this, if you as a board have any specific modifications to make to it, we do work in that sense that we officially have a form where you can approve the budget, but with the specific modifications, and I will hand that to you now, if that would be the case. I would just allow any modifications that we might have, and then you are nice on it.
And this must be turned in today?
No, that's in case. I'm just letting you know, in case if we do, I'm presenting that to you now, because that's where we would make any modifications.
Any changes?
Yes.
Okay, with no changes?
Then we don't need that, it's another form that I will bring to you probably tomorrow, or whenever you're in.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead. Commissioner?
Maritza, as long as far as the revenues, notice that we went down from 295.21 PUMs to 268.34. What, are we calculating that for the rent, I mean, for the rents, for the, for the subsidy, I'm sorry? It's operating its budget line item 70600?
Oh, but not on the PUMs? Not on the PUMs?
I'm sorry?
I was looking at the PUMs, not the PUMs?
Well, the, the PUM says that the, the actual that we, that we receive from HUD this year was 295.21, but then for this year's budget, you're requesting 268.34. And the reason I'm asking this is because it's only 727,732, and the total revenue will be 1,634,00392. And the reason I'm asking is because we're, we're overspent, we don't have a, a balanced budget, we're overspent by 126,000. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking that on the, on the revenue side, and I'll probably be asking some, some items on the expenses too. So, so right now, the question is, you know, the 268.34 that we requested, that's less than what we received this year?
So the, the 268 on the PUMs is actually higher than the previous one, because the previous one was 24578?
The actual, the one that we're closing this year?
The, it's so, okay, so on those, the only, there's still, let me explain to you here, on page six, where we have the actual estimated and actual audited amount, there's still estimates on that. So it's estimated amounts because of the changes on the percentage of the occupancy with the PUMs. So it's, it's an estimated amount through the end of this year.
Okay, so, so we have more vacancies this year?
No, we have less, but yeah, so they haven't taken, the way we work with Lindsay and our accountants, they pull out of the VMS, but the budget's actually based off of practices through December, and that's when we were still trying to get our occupancy rates up. As a matter of fact, that's when they hit 98, 99 last month. So because of that, they're using what we had, so it's an estimated amount for the PUMs, it's not an actual amount.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's a proposed, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, but it, it, still, it's an 82,878 difference, so you know, when you're, when you're negative 126,000 and you got 82,000, you know, that kind of helps. Okay, that's all I have on the, on the revenue side, and on the, on the expenses.
Go ahead, continue.
On the expenses, I was looking at the, at the, at the sewer, and we paid 90,000, we budgeted 90,000 last year for sewer. And we only spent 62,918, so there was 27,000 dollars that, that we, we over-proposed, but...
On the sewer, we, so in, in talking to Karen, our accountant, when we set these bar, with these allocations, we set them higher, expecting increases, we rather go above than be in the negative. So a lot of these amounts are set a lot higher for this year, this coming year, than they were last year, even though there was a lot of things. Even though there was a lot of things that we did go back and as of December, like I said, the practices as of December, if there was areas or lines that we didn't even spend any on, then we just got rid of them completely. So this budget as a whole is preparing for anything that would or could go up. And on the sewer, which we pay to the city, we used to get charged on a quarterly basis and we just changed that with Jean and Sergio and now we're gonna be built on a monthly basis. So if you look at those numbers even on our report from today, our, our actual balances as of today, that only covers us through December. So we're, we're two quarters behind. One quarter will be paid out of this fiscal that you're seeing right now, running fiscal and the other portion from the next because of the fact that our fiscal year doesn't run in concurrence with the city.
All right, and then now going back to the ordinary maintenance and operations, you gave us a spreadsheet before the resolution and you allocated 830,700 for that, for that line item and you only spent 472,273. You still have a balance of 357,927.54. And here on your budget, you're only allocating 318,660 this time. So, so that's gonna be pretty close to what you spent this year. Don't you need to allocate a little bit more on that one? Because you allocated almost twice as much last year.
And in allocating that as well, a lot of the expenses that were coming out of here could come out of our administrative and/or operations from grants that we weren't taking advantage of, like uniforms and some of the materials for our make readies. So we're balancing out between the two grants now, I'm sorry, the two budgets now, our capital grant and this one and hopefully cutting costs here so we could apply it elsewhere.
Are you contracting out for the make readies?
No.
No, you're doing them?
If it's on turnaround status for remodel, yes. If not, we're doing it. But for example, if you see, we've had one that's been offline, well, in make ready status for two months because the guys went in there and started it. However, it was so bad that once they started lifting the actual floor, we had to redo all the wood paneling underneath and stuff. So all that comes out of our regular operating budget if we don't actually align both things from the capital grant and this for operations.
So you're not using capital funds for that?
We use capital, yes, that's what I'm saying.
You put them offline.
When we have a contractor come in, that's one part of it. But if we're just buying supplies like floor for whatever make readies, that comes out of capital also, but before it was coming out of here. So before, we weren't really balancing both acts. It was either one way or the other opposed to using the funds from both for a make ready because we can't.
So you're reporting all the offlines to HUD so we can keep getting the subsidy?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that's why even though we have 226 units, our percentage is at 98 because we're out of 220 because six are currently offline.
And my last question. On the extermination, you budgeted for 30,000 but last year you budgeted for 12,285,000. This is more than double. Is there a reason?
Preventive maintenance. So I'm really pushing preventive on this. Before, it was just a matter of when it was needed, we would go in and exterminate but that does not take care of problems. So I'm looking at a plan, future plan, not looking, we have a future plan for preventive maintenance when it comes to exterminating.
So this will be a yearly thing?
Yes.
Okay, well, that was my last question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. With that said, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You're okay.
One more question. On the, on the salaries? I don't, maybe I need to ask Mr. Kramer that. Okay, you're budgeting some increases, right? For some employees?
Yes, sir. That was under the direction of HR and Finance to make sure I included a 1% increase for any employees that have been employed less than 10 years.
And that's what the cost of living increase?
I'm not sure what the 1% is because it was only for employees under 10 years, like I said. But I was told to make sure I included it in my budget, which I did. I received an email for that.
So Mr. Kramer, the question to you is, how does this work? The Housing Authority has a different fiscal year end than the city of Nogales. So if we approve the budget tonight, when do the salaries take place?
We'll probably have to revise the budget if we do move in that direction with the city employees. Concurrently then, we'll have to come back and look at housing.
Well, that was actually why we put it in. So this isn't, this doesn't mean that...
But you said 1%.
It was a 1% in case, yeah, that they told.
But in case we go higher than 1%, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes.
But my question was, the year ends are different. The fiscal year for the Housing Authority, it's March 31st, so April 1st would be the beginning of their fiscal year. Do they start getting that salary or do they wait till July like every other employee of the city?
In the past, we have waited till July because we're, in that case, we go as employees of the city and we have to follow the city personnel policy like everybody else does. So this is just for the sense of my budgeting and my planning for my 2026 fiscal year.
So we can approve the budget tonight and maybe mention what a notation, salaries will become effective July 1st?
If there's a change.
Right, and if we do a, obviously if we do higher than 1%, it can come back and do a budget adjustment.
Exactly. Thank you. That's good though. I'm glad. I'm glad.
So with that said, shall we amend amend it to where employees, employees will, will get the salary increase with the city fiscal year? And?
Well, we're not amending the budget. We're approving it as it is. It's just, it's just a note.
Just make a note that if there's a change, it wouldn't go into effect until July 1st because we're city employees.
Yeah, once we control or once we improve the city budget for employees, you guys can come back and do that amendment.
Yes.
Not tonight, though.
Yeah, we can approve it as presented.
Right.
Okay. So with that said, we have motion and second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Seven zero. Okay, any future agenda items? Anybody?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
On, since we're starting the new year, I wanted to ask what else you would like to see on our report. I was considering maybe our actual inspections, the inspections conducted monthly. I'm not sure if that's something you would be interested in or what else you would be interested in. So moving forward, starting April, we can start, I could start adding to my report, but I'd like to know what you want to see.
I have an idea. If you can also include, which is a good, thank you for asking, also like the events
Okay.
that take place there throughout the housing.
Okay.
You know, whether it be there, I went to one of the year events the other day, which was great. I don't know if it was your event, but the women, Centro, sí, which is wonderful and great to visit. But yeah, you can include these events. That way we all kind of know what's going on.
Great.
Thank you. Great idea.
Commissioner Doe?
Maybe it's changed, but it hadn't for a while. Hopefully, now that you're there, there's some positive changes. One of the things that last year, some of the residents would still complain was about when the weeds would grow and, and the, and years before it would get cleaned up and I think the last administration made them start cleaning up their yards. And there's a lot of elder folks that, I mean, some people can do it, but not everyone. It's hard, it's hard for them to be able to, to clean the yards. And so I was wondering if, if housing was taking care of that problem for them or are they still dropping it in the lap of the tenants?
So to be honest with you, it's within our housekeeping policy that states that they are responsible, especially the gated areas. They're responsible for inside the unit and outside the unit. I hear you in the sense of our seniors. Unfortunately, if we do it for the seniors, we have to do it for everybody else because we have to provide equitable service to all our tenants. So what I was thinking of doing down the line is maybe get volunteers that would be willing to go help and do it. Another option we have is bringing the policy to you and we can change it. But what is that gonna look like? Are we gonna do it for everybody? Do we have the manpower to do it for everybody? And how could you do it for just one or not the other? But the way the policy reads right now, they're actually responsible and if they don't do it within a timely fashion that they're given, then we go in and we charge them to do it. That's what the policy reads, the current policy. So like I said, we can revisit the policy, but we would really have to come up with equitable solutions as to how we want to approach this as a whole board.
Again, maybe it's something that we need to visit somehow, make a difference for the elderly folks. I think, I don't think it's right that older people, if they're in a real tight budget, they can't afford to be paying somebody to clean the yards and they can't do it themselves. I don't know if they have relatives that would help and I don't know, but I would like you to bring it back to us as far as maybe a volunteer program reaching out. But then again, now that it's considering that it's a volunteer program, they don't have to do it for everybody, do they? I mean, they can do it for the elderly or the people that are handicapped, but doesn't mean that they have to do it for the younger folks that can do their own cleaning. That's considering that it's on a volunteer basis. Nobody's getting paid, right?
Exactly, and again, that would be a group that's willing to volunteer to come and help. It wouldn't be through us because then there would be, you know, we'd be facing the same problem of equity. And I hear you, believe me, I hear you and I feel for them as well. But like I said, that's something that we would need to revisit the policy as a whole and/or come up with solutions as a team. I'm open for suggestions and recommendations, but currently, that's what...
So is this something that you'd like for one of the commissioners to put in a future agenda?
Sure, I could, I could bring it back or I can send you the policy. I could email you the policy and then we could take it from there. Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing that up and yes, it's been one of my concerns as well.
Okay, thank you.
Marita?
Yes.
Don't you have like a community service program there like for residents that are behind on their rent and some family members over 18 that are not working? They can do community service at the Housing Authority?
That used to be in place many, many years ago. And it wasn't a requirement, well, actually, they were excused from it depending on their eligibility status and certain things. So, long story short.
Not no more.
They, yeah, they don't, they're not required anymore, but everything's possible. I mean, maybe a Cub Scout team, a, you know, Boy Scout, something, if we come together and, you know, let them know that we have this issue, maybe they're willing to do it. Community service, high school students, you know, somebody, somewhere.
Okay.
Senior project, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Marita. With that said, I move to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? All right, opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you, Marita.
Thank you.